Good evening. This first meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, it is my honor and pleasure to welcome you all home for our first meeting of the new term. As a reminder for members, the press, and members of the public in attendance, we are asking all attendees to take this opportunity to silence any electronic devices you may have, including cell phones. Looking around at this chamber, I am inspired. Inspired for the start of this new term, our new and returning members, and all that is possible for us to achieve together over the next four years. It is our mission to improve quality of life in every neighborhood in Baltimore. To all of our residents, know this: City Hall is your house. In here, we will do the people's business, and we will stand up for democracy. We invite you to join us. Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be offered by the Reverend George Hopkins of Baltimoreans United in Leadership Development. Reverend Hopkins, the floor is yours.
God in a moment that is brimming with potential and promise, as this city council begins to put his hands to the work, we ask that you will give them the ability and the resolve to move and forge potential into reality and promises into prosperity. May you use every element and faculty that you have given them to better the future of Baltimore. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Hopkins. Now, Councilmember Zach Blanchard of the 11th District and our resident Marine veteran will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Councilmember Blanchard. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
President Cohen, councilmembers Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you Madam Clerk. The proposed rules for the 74th term were provided to members via email. I would like to recognize Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a great honor to work with your office on these rules, as well as Council Vice President Middleton. And Councilwoman Burnett and I started working on a new set of rules a few months ago, and I'm glad that we were able to work with your office to get them to the finish line. The reason we needed to update the council rules is very basic. There was no reference at all in the previous rules to online hearings, to the virtual bill file, to many things that we do already in the chamber. So we looked at not just those things, but really to do a wholesale change to the rules. So I'm going to summarize, and members, you have the summary on your desk, of what the major changes are to the council rules. And I'll remind the public that the council rules are extremely important because they allow us the protocols by which we operate here in this chamber, as well as in committees. And it's extremely important that we're all on the same page of what those rules are. And every legislative body has a set of rules that govern them. So these are ours. If you look, members, on your chart here, some of the major changes in the rules include changing from Roberts Rules of Order to Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. This was a recommendation from our parliamentarian. It is very similar to all the work that we've already done with, you know, making motions, et cetera, et cetera. So not a lot is going to change in that regard, but it is more suited to legislative bodies, and that's why we've decided to use it here. The second major change is that we are, we put in here into the rules what happens on opening day. Here we are, on opening day. And we will be doing these items, which includes announcement of the committees, doing the rules, and making sure that we vote in the council vice president. There are also new requirements for what's reported on Legistar. And in the body of the rules, we talk about the Legislative Public Information Portal as our online portal, just in case we don't use Legistar sometime in the future. We wanted to have a sort of generic way of talking about it, but that is our online bill file, our online portal. So we have, we are going to make sure that we're distinguishing between lead sponsors and co-sponsors. We're going to be adding voting records, hearings, and amendments. And we will be linking the, the link to the recording of the hearing that is on YouTube will be on the Legistar. So we wanted to put all of that in. We, one of the recommendations from Councilwoman Burnett was to put in a clause and a section about removal or censure of a member. We do not have procedures for doing that, even though it is in the charter. We still have to work on that part. So it is not in here right now. There's still some work to be done with the Law Department to make sure that we get it right and that it is constitutional. So we did put that note in here that we'd been thinking about it, and the council president has agreed that we will come back to it at some point in time in the near future. Immediate adoption of a resolution now requires 10 votes and not 12, and it will be done by suspending Rule 37. The president shall be called, and on the right side is where you'd find the rule. I haven't been citing those. I've just been looking at the chart. Now, we're also changing the order by which we vote. In the current way that we've been doing it, the president votes first, and then we go down the list by district. In this new set of rules, the president will vote last. And that is a common practice in other legislatures. And also said that number 14 does not have to break the tie. It will be the president breaking any ties. Immediate adopt, oh, I did that one. Explaining of the votes. We typically, when we do a roll call, explain the votes as we are voting. It is typical in other legislative bodies to do it after every member votes, so that every member gets a chance to put their vote and can explain, the members can explain their votes afterwards, so that some who vote later are not unduly influenced when somebody else is explaining their vote. Also, it is common practice. We also put in language about a member can pass once on a vote, which means that then that will be called. So if I decide to pass, well, that wouldn't make sense for me as 14, but if two decided to pass, then we would go back and make sure that two was able to vote, the councilwoman from District 2 was able to vote later. The president and all members are required to vote yes or no, yea or nay, on all questions, and abstentions are allowed, but members have to rise prior to the vote to abstain. And we do have language in here about having to abstain for conflict of interest as well. Committee votes require a majority of the present quorum, not a majority of the committee members. That is a change from what we currently do now, which is that the quorum, that the committee votes are based on the number of people in the committee, not necessarily the number of people in the room. So some other changes here. One of the very big ones that I think we've all had consensus around is every single bill will get a hearing. Every single bill will get a hearing. In the past, we've not had hearings on every bill. This will certainly increase our workload, but that also doesn't necessarily mean that every bill will get a vote. We do want to have every bill at least see the light of day and get a fair shot at testimony and consideration. When a committee chair is reporting the bill here on the floor, we're asking committee chairs to be more transparent about what amendments might be on the floor by summarizing those amendments and amendments from the committee. Again, this is common practice in other legislative bodies. Currently, we just say there's amendments on the desk, and we pass them. And this would be a way to make sure that the public is understanding what the amendments might end up being. Public testimony is required at all hearings, except for voting sessions, and virtual testimony will be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Now, the committees, a committee chair can make that decision, but it has to be public that if you're not going to allow, if a committee chair is not going to allow virtual testimony, that that is consistent throughout the term and will be posted online so that it's very clear. If you are going to allow for virtual testimony, then the same applies where it has to be very clear and transparent. So there's some timeline issues here that we've changed. Five-day advance notice requirement to announce hearings. There is no longer the rule that the bill has to wait for the second Thursday after the seventh Friday, whatever it was. And then a 30-day waiting period for committee reports is still in place, but we can announce a hearing prior to committee reports being sent to us. Amendments adopted by the committee shall be circulated to the council 24 hours before the meeting. We did make a change that's not in here that says that if it's uncodified, like a law, zoning matter, that those amendments could happen sooner than that. Floor amendments shall be circulated five hours before the council meeting, and amendments to be considered by the committee shall be shared with the committee prior to the committee meeting time. Oh, and that's where the codified language, you know, whether it's a codified or uncodified part of the bill. Filling vacancies. We did some work on this as well. We added, remember, the current way to fill a vacancy is that a nominating committee is put together of people who are from that district, but also members that the president appoints. And what we are requiring is that there's at least a youth member on the nominating committee and also an older adult. And then we added a section for if the council president is vacant and the vice chair, or vice president is not able to or does not want the position, a way to be able to fill that vacancy as well. I believe that those are the major changes. Everything else that's in there provides us with consistency throughout the language. And there's also, you know, we fixed some typos and things like that. So again, Mr. President, thank you very much for the opportunity to work on this. I think it's great that we're starting off our new term with a fresh set of eyes on the rules, and I think we've come to a good place. And I want to thank all of our members who have sent in input on these because, you know, this is how we're going to be governed, and it's great to have everybody's input on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. I also want to thank Vice President Middleton, my staff, as well as all the members that thoughtfully engaged in this process. And I think it was a really positive exchange of ideas, so I really appreciate you all's leadership on that. Do I have a motion to adopt the rules? Councilmember Dorsey?
I have just a couple of questions about the rules, if I may. Thank you. A number of changes to the rules were circulated very shortly ago. One thing that I had discussed with staff regarding, look, I have, I have deep concerns about the prescriptive nature of committee, certain elements of the committee business, and in particular about the timing and certainly, I think, a certain level of autonomy in how amendments can be presented to committee members. There's a, I think, a distinction in what I had discussed with staff and what I was hoping to see in the rules regarding, well, as it says, the committee amendments have to be distributed to the committee before the commencement of the committee hearing, with the exception of them, ones that are maybe uncodified in nature. But it doesn't leave any leeway for the, you know, for the possibility that, you know, if a committee member is still having an amendment drafted, you know, a few minutes before the committee hearing, and you know that you're going to have it readily available from DLR five or 10 minutes into the hearing, the way the rule is written doesn't allow for the committee chair to, you know, even state, "We're going to have another amendment coming to us in 10 minutes." As it's written, it has to have already been distributed to the committee members before the commencement of the hearing. And I'm looking for an opportunity to create that little bit of leeway in here.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. If we could, would you be amenable to working with our staff to address that concern after the hearing?
Are we going to address any other amendments or proposed amendments to this at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I'll relinquish the floor for the moment and consider it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey. Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. One, I want to really thank my colleagues for all the great work put into this. These are all things that we talked about in some way, shape, or form, and to see it actually be put into the rules after all the learning we've done over the last four years is deeply appreciated. The one thing that, similar to my colleague, I did have a little pause about was an idea that I agree with, but not completely, and that is that every bill introduce, receive a, receive a hearing. I do agree that it does make sense to give everyone who wants a hearing a hearing, but as a chair, a former chair, and I'm sure other folks here would probably agree, there are a ton of bills for which the sponsor may introduce the bill and not move forward the bill thereafter. I suppose we could have them pull the bill, but that's something that I think we want to be thoughtful about. We certainly don't want to waste the committee's time pursuing an idea or a resolution or a bill that the sponsor really has no intention of following through on. So I just want to make sure that when we do consider some of these other ideas, that that's one that we pick up and think long and hard about. I would love to revisit that in the future.
Absolutely. Appreciate the thoughtfulness, and we'll extend the same opportunity to you, as we discussed before the meeting, to work immediately after the meeting with our staff to address that issue, and appreciate the thoughtfulness. Councilmember Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I only have two issues with the rules. I want to thank my colleagues for addressing many of the concerns I had from last term. However, speaking on behalf of residents of the 7th District, that we're not given the opportunity to virtually testify, I believe in, as a matter of equity, as in representing some of the poorest communities who can phone in and have access to our hearings, I think we must allow virtual testimony so that someone who may be a senior who cannot find parking, who doesn't have, cannot afford $5 an hour to park downtown, or risk being told at the, at the convenience of being able to be here and present, I think we should allow for it, but allow people to sign up prior to the hearing for it to actually happen. I think that would be the happy medium, but I still think we should allow for it, given the amount of residents who don't have time to come here at 10:00 a.m., who don't have time to take off at 2:00 p.m., or 5:00 p.m. to actually be here. I think that is a thoughtful way of amending that rule. Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Schleifer, and then Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two things, and something that just came to mind as Chairman Conway was speaking, is that we actually, the clearing of the bill process, actually, I think, might address that issue, just in the sense that if you introduce a bill, a lot of times we introduce bills really to get engagement and see what stakeholders want to weigh in on it, and when you decide not to proceed on it, eventually, the clearing of the bills will happen. And so I think that the rule actually could, could work the way it is in that regard because it doesn't say a timeline of when it needs to be heard, so technically, it would need to be heard by the end of the term, but if somebody's not proceeding with a bill, it would be cleared out prior to that happening. So just something to note on that. And if I could just also touch on one thing, my colleague from the 7th District, Councilman Torrance, said regarding the virtual testimony, I could tell you, as a chair of a committee this past term, it was a lot of different, there's technical difficulties when it would happen, and there was also, what I saw was a reduce, a reduction of engagement when there would be virtual, because then people wouldn't feel the need to come in or weigh in on some of these bills. And we do have a process that you could submit written testimony ahead of time, which all committees accept that and add it to the bill file and put it on the record. And so if we're going to require people to notify us ahead of time in order to provide virtual testimony, I think that the submitting written testimony would accommodate that. Another concern I would have with allowing virtual testimony across the board is what I found, is we had people weighing in on bills from places that I've never heard of, and they're just all over the country. They just, you know, happen to be interested in a specific topic, and they're weighing in, and so it wasn't Baltimore city residents. So if we are to consider something to make the process easier for folks, I would just ask to see if there's a way we can do that for Baltimore city residents only, if possible, or stakeholders. So if you live in the city or you work in the city, something along those lines, just, I don't think it's reasonable to expect the committees to take in testimony from people in different parts of the country and different parts of the world, just because they want to weigh in on a topic that they think is important for Baltimore, even if they've never even visited here. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to call to, call to kind of note the vote of the rule of abstention prior to the vote. There is a, there's many times in the past that healthy dialogue from council members explaining their vote have swayed votes, and so the abstention before the vote really doesn't allow council members to actually kind of hear the healthy dialogue from other colleagues in order to vote appropriately. So I would ask for consideration for that one as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. Back to Councilman Torrance.
Sorry, hold on a second. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues from the 10th District. We discussed this. I think that one, a classic example, is if a member of the council is deposed for litigation, and we have to take a vote on an action, that member should not have to submit written actual testimony, given that that may have issues for attorney-client privilege with the Law Department as well.
Thank Councilmember Torrance. Any other council members wishing to speak? Councilman Dorsey, I see some unreadiness.
I'm just curious about the drafted amendment that we have on our desk.
I believe we are going to pass, we're going to pass the, pass it to Councilmember Mark Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. From conversation ahead of time about how best to handle this amendment that is before you, the conversation and the guidance from people with way more experience, shockingly than I do, was that the rules be passed or not passed, and then a motion made to amend the rules after having been passed. Now, I was willing to do it any other way. I thought a motion right now to amend the rules prior to the final vote would be in order, but I was told it wouldn't be in order, so I'm, I'm here to bring this before us in whatever way the chair and my colleagues think is most appropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. So what I would propose that we do is address the rules and then go to Councilmember Parker's amendment. I will also say several members have raised important points and concerns, and I really appreciate the really healthy dialogue on this. I am committed, and I think we as a body are committed, to an ongoing process, whether that means a standing committee, whether that means just coming back at our next meeting to address the rules, to address the changes that folks in this chamber raised. I'm going to look forward to supporting with our staff, with Councilmember Ramos and Vice President Middleton, so that we can get it right. Any other unreadiness before we vote on the rules separate from Councilmember Parker's amendment? Councilmember Porter?
With regard to filling vacancies, have we considered youth younger than 18 years of age?
Councilmember Ramos, did we discuss vacancies? Thank Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. I, we did discuss what would be the appropriate age, and I think that we would be open to looking at whether, you know, going down to 16 would be fine, so I think we would be open to considering that.
Great. Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Councilmember Porter?
For the public, just an explanation, when we talk about the voting age in the state of Maryland, 16 is an appropriate age. And so I think that an opportunity for young people to serve more in city government, get interested in public service, reducing that age of 16 would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. I see Councilmember McCray, and then Dorsey.
Mr. President, can you explain 610 for me? 610B?
Say it one more time, Councilmember.
Can you explain 610B? Committee vote, committee votes require a majority of the present quorum.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So what that one is, so currently in committees, if we have seven members of a committee, the quorum is four, okay? And the current rules say that we actually have to have four votes in the affirmative in order for a bill to move forward. And so what we're saying here in this new rule is that if quorum is four, and then of course, if we even have seven, that the majority of the people in the room would carry the vote, as opposed to four, which is the quorum. So you have to have four in the affirmative now, just using seven as the example. And with the new rule, it would be the majority of the folks in the committee that are in the room during the vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Any other council members? Councilmember Dorsey?
Thank you. I appreciate that one in particular. I kind of gamed that out with staff yesterday. I like that one in particular. I like putting people on the hook, make them show up, do the job. I just look. Mr. President, you know my reservations about the rule on amending rules, the most meta of rules. I would just say, we have one amendment that's actually been drafted, and as soon as we adopt these rules, the one that we actually have drafted, like all others, goes from being able to be adopted by a basic majority of the members here to requiring a supermajority. I would just posit that since we have one that's actually in writing, that perhaps we might take a vote on the one that we have in writing as an amendment to the rules before adoption of the rules. Mr. President?
We have to have the rules adopted in order to amend, I believe. Mr. Parliamentarian?
No.
No?
You can amend it before they're adopted, and then we require some majority.
Got it. All right. Councilman Schleifer?
Because I would think that, and we were just discussing this, that the council doesn't have, as of this moment right now, this city council doesn't have any rules. And so, and so you can't, you can't amend, you can't amend something that doesn't exist. So it has to exist in order to amend it. No, I'm saying, he can't, right. So if you introduce rules, right, like the rules were introduced, and thank you, Ethan and your team for working on it, a lot of great stuff here, we have to adopt something in order to operate off of. Once we do that, that's my interpretation, but I just think that the council, I think the first action of the council has to be to adopt the rules in order to be able to govern, and we can't, how do you amend something without there being the rules of what the process of amending is? We'd be operating off of a prior council terms rules.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Torrance?
I just have a point of information for the parliamentarian. If I, if I read the new rule, the new procedures that we're following, a member from the 1st District could amend the motion before the floor, which would be adopting our rules with a subsequent amendment that we can vote on, and then we have to carry it forward so it was a bill. Am I right or am I wrong, Mr. Parliamentarian?
Mr. Parliamentarian?
Please fill out the rest of the question for me. Mr. President?
Mr. Parliamentarian, do you mind answering the council member's query?
When the previous session adjourned, did you?
You need a mic.
Because nobody can hear that. So can you, it's no battery. Can you share your mic with him? Share your mic. Yeah, somebody share, yeah, anyone. All right. Okay. One does he have?
All right. Mr., I got it. Be careful. Mr. President, when the previous session ended, the technical term is signee die, everything came to a close, it was dissolved. This is a brand-new session, brand-new body, and until it adopts these rules, it is operating under common parliamentary law, which is well documented in many cases. So yes, you have majority vote, et cetera, et cetera. The rules at this time are a main motion before the assembly. They can be adopted by a majority vote. They can be amended likewise by a majority vote at this time. Once they are adopted, then they can only be amended as prescribed by the rules. So for now, everything is a, a main motion, majority vote, amendment, majority vote, and you're operating under common parliamentary law.
Fascinating. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Councilmember Dorsey?
Thank you. As you suspect, I knew this. Under common parliamentary law, it's normal procedure for us to be able to amend the principal order of business before adopting the principal order of business. So if it would be well received, I would make a motion to put forth the amendment from Councilmember Parker, unless he would rather do so himself.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey. Point of order, Councilmember Ramos?
I don't believe we even have a motion on the rules yet. So we need to make a motion to pass the rules, and then make a motion to amend the rules.
No.
Yes?
No. I believe that was, what was just discussed is that we can...
No, we don't have to vote on the rules. We just need to make a motion, and then the amendment is an amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Mr. Parliamentarian?
The council member is...
Mic.
Thank you.
The council member is correct. Technically, Mr. President states the motion. Shall these rules be adopted, at which point then it's open for discussion and amendment? It hasn't been stated yet by the presiding officer, yourself, Mr. President.
Understood. Councilmember Dorsey? Ethan?
Mark wants to be recognized.
I'm sorry.
Does he want to be?
Councilmember Dorsey, are you looking to be recognized by the chair?
I haven't been recognized, so I didn't feel that. No, I'm unclear at this point. I'd like to put forth a motion to amend the rules, but per the parliamentarian, I'm not sure if the rules are before us.
Councilmember Ramos?
I move to pass the council rules as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of...
One more, you've got my part.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. I appreciate Councilperson Ramos and for moving the rules, and now we can discuss them, and I can put in front of you the amendments. As a person of deep personal faith, as a person who's been born in 15 years of professional, full-time services, member of the clergy, I know and appreciate the value of prayer. I know and appreciate the role of prayer on an individual basis, as an expression of faithfulness, as a way to sustain and support one another through the day. I know and appreciate the role of prayer within the gathered community of faith, whether of similar faith or in an interfaith environment. I know and appreciate the role of prayer in the public sphere at vigils and marches and rallies and events often held right outside of this building. It is because I know and appreciate the role and power of prayer so well that I urge us to end the practice of invocations at city council meetings, where we gather to do the work of this incredibly diverse city. I am convicted of the fact that freedom of religious expression best flourishes when not entangled with the government, and that the work of the people through legislative bodies like this one is the most, is most impartial, fair, accessible, and effective when not entangled with religious activity in the form of public government sanctioned prayer during its meetings. At a time of rising religious nationalism around the world, and dangerous Christian nationalism here in the United States in particular, we do not need to look far to see and understand the genuine danger of combining sectarian religious identity and activity with the work of governance. Left alone by the government, religious people and movements can freely and powerfully call upon those who exercise governing power to work for justice, equity, and peace in our world. Held separate from religious entanglement, government can truly represent, listen to, and address the concerns of people of all backgrounds, of all faiths and of no faith, without the reality or even the impression of favoritism or discrimination. Combined, all mixed up together, the results are too often bad government and bad religion. Now, this isn't a question of constitutionality, I mean, I'll turn to the lawyer here, but it's not a question of constitutionality. The Supreme Court, just in 2014, in a town of Greece versus Galloway, by a five to four vote, with the five Republican nominees voting one way and the Democrats the other, but still, a five to four vote, the Supreme Court upheld that bodies like ours may have invocations. We may have them. No disagreement from my part, but I'm encouraging us, I'm saying that we ought not to. We have that power to, to amend our rules and to end this practice here. Just for example, you may be shocked to know, I spent some time listening to the first, like, three minutes of the last two years of council sessions, just to see how the invocations went over the last two years that you all gathered together before I had the chance to join you. Over those two years, across 48 meetings, there were 34 invocations, 94% of them Christian, which is my faith. I appreciate Christian prayer. I appreciate my colleagues and what they shared, and it was, it was really lovely to listen to prayer after prayer after prayer for your work and this body in our city. And yet it's hard to say that's representative of the diversity of faith in our city, not even close. Many of the prayers, in fact, were explicitly sectarian, using language and expressing ideas which would disallow people of other faiths or of no faith from, from feeling seen or being able to participate fully, of being alienated from this meeting where they have come to be part of the city's work, to have their voice heard. Furthermore, several were explicitly prosopizing, trying to encourage conversion to the Christian faith in the midst of this space, for all those who are listening. One person who was invited has since, their church has since been involved in a horrific child sex abuse scandal. And that same church, even prior to their being invited to pray here, was acted in incredibly reckless fashion in the early days of the pandemic to not protect themselves and their community, and yet they came and were invited to share a prayer here for, I don't know why. All I'm saying is this, we shouldn't put our council president or our council members in the position of deciding which religious voices and which religious messages deserve to be given this microphone. We shouldn't create any doubt in the minds of our city residents, our constituents, those who have come before us, about whether their religious identity would impact their participation or their representation or their fair hearing in this space. And so I move amendment to the rules to strike Rule 3, 3 in its entirety and substitute what is before you, simply maintaining the preliminary presentation option at the discretion of the chair, but removing the option of the chair to have an invocation before. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. We have a motion on the floor to suspend Council Rule 1-4. Do we have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion on the floor.
Do we have a second? This has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of suspending Council Rule 1-4, say aye.
No.
I'm sorry. All those in favor of suspending the motion, all those, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Nay.
Nay.
Roll call. But, point of order, Councilmember?
The motion was made and seconded. I appreciate the second from several colleagues. I was hoping that my voice would not be the only voice to weigh in on what is, I think, a fairly substantive topic, and so prior to a vote, I was expecting that there might be at least an invitation for others to weigh in, but if not, that's far be it for me to put words in your mouth, but I was, I was certainly hoping that we might have a conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Parker. Yeah, let's open the floor, if we could, to discussion and debate. I see Councilmember Schleifer.
And I thank my new colleague for, you know, for his thoughtful consideration of that. You know, one thing I'll tell you, as, I never did the calculations on, on what religions came forth here. In fact, as far as my district is pretty diverse. I've invited imams in here, I've invited rabbis, pastors, ministers, and so I've had all different faiths in here. And if I could just say one, one quick little story about one of my guests that I invited here in my first term, was a gentleman of faith who's also a strong community advocate, and I invited him to come here and lead the invocation, and he was a little surprised that I, that I did so. And he came in here and he gave us a wonderful blessing, and on the way out, he asked me, why did you invite me here to come and give the blessing before the council? He says, I have definitely not been good to you. I've spent many, I've spent many time actually bashing you on social media, but yet you invited me in here to give a prayer. I said, the reason was very simple. I said, I noticed you spent the past couple of years criticizing everything I do online and saying some pretty not friendly things to me and about me, and so I figured I'd get at least one prayer out of you. And so he, and so, and this is a true story. For those of you who want to look up the record, you can figure it out pretty easily. But, but the point is, I think that, you know, this is a diverse body, and a diverse body that needs to be respected, and I think that it doesn't hurt to get a little extra prayer. I think we could all use it, regardless of who's giving it. I mean, we believe that, you know, you can get prayers even from your elders or anybody else. They don't actually have to be certified as a specific, you know, person of any faith. I mean, if anybody ever wants to give me a blessing, I'll, I'll receive it. And so I think, I prefer to keep the invocation. I think it's a nice thing, and if we want to strive for a little more diversity, I would support that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleifer. I saw Councilmember Porter's hand up first, and then Councilmember Torrance.
Following up on Councilmember Schleifer's recommendation, I wonder if there's an opportunity to look at the demographics of the city as far as religious diversity, and then equally segmenting the council invocations based on that religious diversity. So that can be an option as a compromise for Councilmember Schleifer, but also in reference to Councilmen from the 1st District.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Reading the amendment, it gives discretion. He is right. I am a firm believer in religious freedom, but also freedom of religious expression. This does give us an opportunity to still have it. I think that it also recognizes that not all persons have faiths. Some people don't actually live in a higher power. There are some of us who are Thessaiists. There are some of us who are Buddhists as well, and others who have different faiths. I think that this just provides us a moment of clarity that we still have the discretion, but we should strive to be inclusive of everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. I see Councilmember Dorsey, and then Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Parker, for bringing this forward. Look, I've often sat here and gone, it's really strange that I'm in a government building and being prayed over. I have a prayer life of my own. I have a spiritual life of my own. It's deeply personal to me. It's not religious or affiliated in any sort of nature. I appreciate its value. I have also, I've invited people here in our first term in particular to, who are not religious people in any way, just kind of like intellectual folks. Come on in and do whatever it is you think an invocation is, however you feel like invoking. And I feel, you know, I'm happy that I had that opportunity to do that, you know, which makes me a little bit agnostic about the whole thing, but, you know, I could do without it all, you know, and I do appreciate the simplicity of what this change proposes, that the proposed set of rules, you know, makes a distinction of an invocation versus an informational presentation. So what's proposed is just to do away with the invocation altogether in favor of just doing an informational presentation, which I don't even know was even particularly common in the 2016 term. I think we only really had invocations, not the kind of presentations that didn't really become more a thing until we had Council President Scott starting to bring groups in. So kind of go all the way on this, but, you know, leaning in support of, I don't really need to be prayed on before a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey. Councilmember Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I'll be before you very briefly, just want to make note of the difference between may and shall. It does not say we shall, it says we may. In the Alpha Times, there have been other times where we've had chances, where we've had a moment of silence in lieu of a prayer. So again, may versus shall. You may, unless they have to.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullock, for the distinction. Any other council members? I see Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilperson Bullock. Yes, in fact, you'll be shocked to know I have numbers on that as well. We had eight moments of silence, six no prayers or moments of silence whatsoever in the last two years, and 34 invocations, which interesting, and I don't know why, I didn't have a chance to ask the previous council president about it, but over the last 14 meetings, there have only been four invocations, and six or eight of them, there hadn't even been a moment of silence. So I'm not, I don't know what was in the water and the air, but the practice had been, I mean, as you say, it's a may, and the previous council president may decide just not to do anything a lot in the last six months since May. So I would certainly say this, I think it gets, I appreciate religious diversity. One of my favorite, if, if my colleagues don't participate, the Interfaith Prayer Service on New Year's Eve at St. Ignatius is one of my, it's the highlight of my year here, and I've had the chance to participate for a number of years. The reason that I'm, while I, I would appreciate attempts made towards, towards making sure that we were being more thoughtful about inclusivity in the religious voices offering an invocation, I think the cleanest and simplest was why I'm, which is why I'm urging, sorry, why I'm urging the removal of it, is that it gets us into a situation of having to do, having to do a lot of work to try to make sure that that happens. It makes it particularly complicated when 25% of the city of Baltimore identifies no faith whatsoever, and 57% of Democratic Party in the state of Maryland identifies no faith whatsoever. And so it gets really difficult to be fully representative and inclusive in a, in a rapidly changing religious landscape in our city and country. And so I feel like, I feel like the cleanest way, it also doesn't have us then kind of judge or evaluate or try to put limits on what's, what one might say here, to get us out of the business of doing that altogether, and simply say, hey, we're gonna move forward with the people's business and, and let our prayer life be personal and also public, but not in this space.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. Councilman, I saw Jones, and then Glover. Councilman Jones?
First, I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman Parker, for, for this amendment. You know, I guess, I just want to thank you for that because, but my biggest distinction is, I don't think the, it's meant to exclude anyone. I think it's meant to, you know, bring people together, and, you know, actually, it doesn't force anyone to take part, and people have the right, if they want to, to take a step back if they choose to. Like Councilman Bullock said, it's the difference between, you know, shall and, and may. And I think that leaves us the leeway to choose whether or not we want to, whether or not others want to join us as well in the invocation, just from a personal note. The reason why I think is because we all go through tough campaigns, you know, sometimes in prayer, faith is the only thing that gets us through those tough days, and, you know, I don't forget about that. And I think what's going to sustain me and help me get through tough times and making sometimes these tough decisions in, in this body is, you know, our faith and prayer as well. And, you know, I just don't want to leave that to the side, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. I saw Councilmember Glover?
Ladies and gentlemen, to respect all my colleagues, first of all...
You need to push them up. Push it down.
It is, my man.
Thank you.
This bootleg microphone. But, you know, to respect to my colleagues, you know, faith is very important to me. I don't push it on anyone, you know. I do think that the invocation that we had coming to the council was very important, but I think we, the members of the council, had the ability to pick and choose who we wanted to produce the invocation to the council, and at the same time, I believe that, you know, we have the ability to shut our eyes and bow our heads and to whomever we wish to pray. and bow our heads and to whomever we wish to pray for and pray to. We should be given the ability to do that. I stand before you, God, I'm not going, I don't want to get in any trouble because I love you. And I don't want to let faith divide us. Prayer is free. And I think we should just take the ability, when it comes to us as individuals, take the time to ourselves. And when we feel as though there's a need for prayer, like Council member Jones said, you know, prayer has helped us out a lot. And not just as we ran for these public offices, but, you know, you think about the loved ones, what the strength of prayer can do. But to the support of my colleague, Mark Parker, not to pray and push it on any individual who may feel different about prayer. So in that case, I do support my colleague because I wouldn't want no one to push any religious items on me. And I pray as I choose to pray and to with God I choose to pray to.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Glover. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, through my tenure, there has never really been any controversy on this subject. And another note is that the Maryland General Assembly does the same thing throughout their, when they're in session. It's also, being a past president of Mako, its practice around the state. And one thing that stays in my mind as we witnessed our, the installation of our mayor, he did make this statement, "All hands on deck." And as our city moves forward and everyone is watching, you know, our faith-based communities have, particularly in African-American communities, churches are, were everywhere. And they were always partners with government in helping the needs of our people, whether it's homelessness or, you see that a lot of our churches are connected to schools. We have food distributions, we, you know, a wealth of things. And if you think about the history of that and how our city really became a welcoming, diverse city, these are all connections. And I think it's something that we, you know, really need to continue. It reaches all people in different levels. And it just shows how we are a opening building. And this chambers is an open place that we welcome everyone, whatever their beliefs are. And it just helps to bring that communication together. And for a short one or two minutes, it shouldn't hurt.
Thank you, Council Vice President Middleton. Before explaining, before giving my explanation, I do want to thank Councilmember Parker and all the members of the body for the really thoughtful debate and deliberation. I felt it was important for this to be a first debate for us as a council. We are in challenged times for our ability to have thoughtful political dialogue across this country. And so being able to hear from each other, being able to weigh this out, to give the sponsor his due, and to debate back and forth, I think is really important. And so, again, I want to thank the sponsor as well as all the members just for the thoughtfulness and for being willing to take on a tough topic in public. And I hope this sets a tone for how we as a council will proceed. I do want to say that I respect the desire to keep church and state separate as much as I respect the enormous credibility of the amendment sponsor on this topic. Before I call the vote on this issue, I'd also like to articulate that the invocation portion of council meetings is not an endorsement of any specific faith or creed, as has been said. Rather, it is an opportunity to exercise our First Amendment rights while showcasing the rich spiritual tapestries and faith-based traditions that make Baltimore the beautiful city that it is. I believe the council's invitations to various faith leaders is just one of the many ways we shall, we must be intentional about bringing our many diverse communities into City Hall. Do also respect Councilman Bullock's point about "shall" versus "may." Now, we have a motion on the floor and have debated that motion. Do we have a second for Councilmember Parker's motion?
Aye.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Roll call.
President Cohen?
No.
We have not passed the rules yet.
We have not passed the rules yet.
Sorry, y'all.
We'll get there, Councilmember Ramos. Almost there.
Y'all like those rules.
It's the one time I get to do it.
President Cohen?
No.
Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Aye.
Schleifer?
No.
Middleton?
Yeah.
Torrance?
Aye.
Gray?
No.
Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Blanchard?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
That is five in favor, Mr. President.
That is five in favor and 10 opposed. The mo, the motion
Six. Too many to recall again.
Mr. Parliament.
He has to be recognized first.
I'm sorry, Councilman Parker.
Councilperson Glover, would be so good as to repeat. I wasn't sure that I heard from all the way over here. God, thank you.
The motion fails? Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. We are, we are back to Councilmember Ramos's rules. Do I have a motion to adopt
the rules?
Second.
The, motioned and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the council rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the rules are adopted. Between now and next meeting, we will continue to discuss, debate the rules. There were several well-taken points by members, so please feel free to send those to my staff, Councilmember Ramos, and Vice President, President Middleton. Members, please note that the new committee assignments are on the members' desks and have previously been circulated by email to your inboxes. Later in the meeting, we will vote to approve the members' chair and vice chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations. But first, we will proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the Journal for the December 2nd, 2024 regular meeting proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. The Journal is adopted. Communications regarding bills signed by the mayor can be found beginning on page two of the agenda. There are no bills or resolutions for introduction, sorry, bills to be introduced. There are no bills or resolutions for introduction on the members' desks. I believe we will have a number of introductions the next time we convene, but I thank Mayor Scott's administration and the members for honoring a request to save introductory bills until our next scheduled meeting. Consent calendar. There is no consent calendar on this evening's agenda. Nomination of the council vice president. The council must elect its vice president, who will serve for the duration of the 74th term as per Article 3, Section 10 of the City Charter. Do I have a motion to approve the nominee? To move the nominee. Council, Councilmember McCray?
Mr. President, I move to elect Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District to be vice president of the Baltimore City Council.
This motion has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of electing Sharon Green Middleton to serve as the council's vice president, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and Councilmember Sharon Green Middleton has been elected by her peers to serve as vice president for the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council. Congratulations. Mazel tov. The chair now recognizes Vice President Middleton.
We've heard so many speeches, really, all week. But thank you all for having the faith in me to continue on with what I do with passion and from my heart. And President Z. Cohen is my fifth council president. And this will make my third term as vice president. So it's truly an honor to work hard and represent this city. And for me, it has never been about the titles of the position. It's about the work we do in our individual communities and just trying to help the people of this city. We all have a calling in life. And, you know, this is one of them for me. So again, it's about the work that we do together. And I'm here to help in any way I can. People tell me, you need to write a book. Right now, it's still about the service. And our city, we're, we are in a good space right now, I feel. And again, it's about communicating with each other, working together with each other. And I think this term can set a mark, not just for Baltimore, but for the country. Everyone is looking at us. And I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and start working. So thank you all for having that faith in me. And I'm going to do my best to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And just want to personally thank you for your mentorship, your leadership, and for really modeling resilience and showing up to work in the face of adversity. It means a lot to the members that you have been so present. And I just want to thank you for pouring into me, pouring into us. And we appreciate you for showing up, doing the job, and showing exactly what leadership looks like. Madam Vice President?
Just one more thing. I would be remiss if I didn't mention
Wait, hang on, your mic.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention my chief of staff, Ty Miller, that had You know, Ty has been with me since day one. So I'm letting you all know that that's a true example of how a councilperson can be successful. You have to get that right chief of staff. And she's been with me since day one. And I tell this story, just a piece of it. When I first got on the council, and the first three months, I did not have any staff at all. I took my time to figure out who I was going to have for certain positions. And it was when that apple tree was open, which is now closed, but Chase Bank had folded and Ty was a manager, and we just kind of ran into each other. And I says, send me your resume, because I, you know, I was feeling her energy. And from that day forward, you know, she, we have been just great partners. She's like family to me. And we, she believes in my vision and works with me. So I just, I'm just letting you all know, that's the way your chief of staff should be working. So thank you. Thank you, Ty. Love you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Ty. And if we could, just a big round of applause for all the staff that work here in city government. Truly, truly appreciate what you all do and the partnership as the vice president, so well articulated. Approval of members' chair and vice chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations, as outlined in Article 1, subtitle 1 of the Baltimore City Code, the council president appoints five members and designates from them a chair and a vice chair to serve on the Committee on Legislative Investigations. The council first approves council members, then the chair and vice chair.
The nominees, the nominees for the members of the Committee on Legislative Investigations are Councilmember Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, Councilmember Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer of the 5th District, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District, Councilmember Paris Gray of the 8th District, and Councilmember Antonio Glover of the 13th District.
Do I have a motion to approve the nominees?
No.
This motion has been proved, has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the nominees, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the nominees are appointed to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
The nominee for the chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations is Councilmember Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer of the 5th District.
Do I have a motion to approve the nomination?
Yes.
Moved by Councilmember Glover. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been, this motion has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the nominee, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and Councilmember Yitzhak Schleifer will serve as chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
The nominee for the vice chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations is Councilmember Antonio Tony Glover of the 13th District.
Do I have a motion to approve the nomination? Council, Councilmember, moved by Councilmember Schleifer. Is there a second?
Second.
This motion has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries and Councilman Glover will serve as vice chair of the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair. Selection of council representative to the planning commission. Article 7, Section 71 of the Baltimore City Charter provides for a member of this body to serve ex officio on the city planning commission. The council's representative to the commission is to be elected by this body. Do I have a motion to move a nominee to the planning commission? Councilmember Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I nominate and move the nomination of Councilmember John Bullock from the 9th District to represent the city council on the planning commission.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there a second?
Second.
This motion has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of electing Councilmember John Bullock to serve as a member, ex officio of the Baltimore City Planning Commission, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and Councilmember John Bullock has been elected by his peers to serve as the council's representative to the planning commission. Congratulations, Councilmember Bullock. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your support. Definitely want to thank my colleague, Councilman Dorsey, who's going to be chairing our Transportation and Land Use Committee. And as you know, there'll be a number of finding of facts that'll be coming through the planning commission, so we'll work seamlessly to do that. I will say that this is very much a full circle moment for me. I will say, growing up in a neighborhood that had so many challenges and wondering why my neighborhood looked the way that it did. We talk a lot about equity here in our city. And education means a lot to me. And I had a teacher who said to me in high school, maybe you ought to study political science. And so I did that at Hampton University and was exposed to the idea of city planning, not only as from an academic point of view, but also from a professional point of view. And some of you know, I've got, I had the opportunity to work in another jurisdiction in planning, sponsored a number of bills here in our city around zoning and planning issues. But here, we are, we have a great opportunity moving forward here But here, we are, we have a great opportunity moving forward here in our city to right some of the wrongs of the past. Quite often, many of our communities have been harmed by bad planning, whether it be the highway to nowhere that comes through the district I represent, or whether we're talking about urban renewal plans that have not worked for certain communities. So again, there's so much for us to do as a council. But I do look forward to hearing from our members and working with the members of the council to ensure that the vision in terms of comprehensive planning for our city moves forward. So again, thank you, colleagues, for your support. I look forward to working for you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bullock. Consent calendar. Members, at this point in the meeting, we will usually have committee announcements. There are no such announcements this evening. Regular announcements, I would now like to take a special moment to recognize our new members, Councilmembers Mark Parker of the 1st District, my councilman, Paris Gray of the 8th District, Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, and Jermaine Jones of the 12th District. Please join me in congratulating them on completing their first council meeting. We are announcing our council member retreat. It will be on December 9th and the location will be announced soon. And Legastar, thank you. Are there any other regular announcements? The chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
At, at this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now 184 victims of homicide this year.
Thank you. I would like to close our meeting with something new. This term is going to be about demonstrating to Baltimoreans that the City Council can and will change lives for the better in ways big and small. At each meeting, I will recognize a member of the council to highlight a recent success in their district. Members will have two minutes to speak. We will begin tonight with Councilmember Paris Gray of the 8th District and will continue each week in reverse order. Get ready, Mr. Torrance. In reverse order, until we come all the way back around. Councilmember Gray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to everyone here and to my colleagues. I just want to point out and give a quick highlight to something that's very near and dear to me and that is grocery stores. So during the primary, actually, primary election day, the word started to spread that we were losing Giant. For those who don't know, Giant is in the Emerson Village Shopping Center. That left the Emerson Village community and the greater communities outside of that in the food desert that extended way beyond, you know, the west side. Particularly for our older residents who had no way of getting fresh produce and also pharmacy and the medicines they need. The councilman, Councilman Burnett, outgoing councilman, now I'm incoming councilman. We, we met along with our team and we tried to devise a plan to make sure that we brought that back and bought a grocery store back to the Emerson Village Shopping Center. I also want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Porter, who sent me contact for someone immediately, the same person who opened up Jumbo Fresh. I'm so sorry, it's going to take a little more than two minutes, so just bear with me. I just want to give another shout out to Councilwoman Porter. She actually won our first meetings. It was canceled initially and then she said, you know what? Why don't you come with me on a field trip? Little did I know, we were going to meet with the folks that were going to open up the Jumbo, Jumbo, Jumbo Fresh. And it was a great experience and it really taught me firsthand what it takes for someone to literally put their feet and boots on the ground to bring back something for their community. So I just wanted to commend Councilwoman Porter for that. And so with those lessons, we reached out to Lanier Richardson and to Lynn Weinberg, both of the Emerson Square, Emerson Village Shopping Center. And we are so blessed to have amazing partners in them. And so last week or last month, I don't know if you guys may have seen the Instagram stories that Councilman Burnett and I participated in. I am so happy to announce that we are replacing the Giant with the LA Mart that will be opening in February of next year. And then later on, in the Emerson Village Shopping Center, we're going to have an Audi. So we're going from zero to two in less than a year. So I just wanted to give a shout out to one, Lynn Weinberg, and Lanier Richardson, and for our amazing team, Darian and Kim, who are staying on with me, and to Councilman Burnett, who is a true fighter for the 8th District in Baltimore overall. And to let folks know that fresh produce and everything that you need will be returning right back to the shopping center and you will see me there all the time because I love Audi myself. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out to just the hard work from everyone. Because what this demonstrated was it doesn't just take a council member, it doesn't just take owners of shopping centers. It's a true partnership to bring the change that we need to our community. And hopefully, for the folks that are sitting there, make sure that you're always advocating for the things that you need. Speak truth to power, whether that is your politician, whether that is the shopping center owner. Because moreover, it was the folks that continuously called our office over and over that really pushed us to work even harder and make those phone calls. So I just wanted to give a quick highlight to our two new grocery stores. And thank you, Mr. President, for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And I really want to just thank you, Councilmember Porter. Just appreciate the partnership. Partnership is something we are going to talk a lot about in these next four years. But all the folks that you mentioned and just having that access to fresh food in West Baltimore is so important. So thank you, thank you, of course, Councilmember Burnett for the incredible advocacy as well. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, January 13th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. There being no further business, this concludes the first regular meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council.